I've got 6:00 PM.
Ma'am, all right, wonderful. Then let's get started. I like to call this meeting to order at exactly 6:00 PM. This meeting is to conduct the business for the city of Montgomery. This evening we'll begin with the invocation and I'd like to ask TJ Wickerson to provide that for us.
Lord, we come this night with humble hearts involved here. Lord, we come thanking you for what you've done, what you're leading us through. We thank you, Lord, for all of the people who ran for office. We think that hopefully that you would guide them, Lord, and give us all understanding. We thank you for this council, our mayor, the, uh, all the people who are servants of this county. Lord, we also want to pray today for the police officers, the one who, who died in the line of duty the last few days and the last few weeks. Lord, we pray for their families. But give us understanding that we know that we are servants here to serve the people and not our will. Thank you for watching over us and leading us through. In Jesus' name we pray, ma'am.
All right, next item of business on your agenda, I pledge allegiance to the flag. We'll begin with the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to republic, public it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the Texas flag.
Honored Texas.
Honored Texas. Pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One city, under God, one indivisible.
First item of business on your agenda is the Business and Citizens Forum. I do believe Councilwoman Huss would like to speak. Is there anyone else? Susan, did you receive anything?
No, ma'am, I have not.
All right, I think you have the floor.
I will be brief, which is not like my usual. I would just like to say that it's been an honor to serve the city as residents and businesses over the last six and a half years. And it's also been a privilege to work with the professional team that we've assembled at City Hall. And I'd just like to thank all of you for your time and patience with me personally. And I look forward to seeing you all on a less, um, professional setting. So I really, again, appreciate all of your time and professionalism over the years. Thank you very much.
And all of your help will be missed. You've done a great job on council. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping. And I'm gonna be calling on you.
All right.
Absolutely. I'll still live exactly in the same spot.
Okay.
He just has to answer the door, TJ. That's.
I don't know. I'll call before I show up.
There you go. Awesome. All right, we're going to begin this evening with the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of minutes of the August 31st, 2020 budget workshop and October 27th, 2020 regular meeting. Item number two, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following resolution. Resolution by the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, designating the Courier newspaper as the official newspaper for the city of Montgomery and authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract. Counsel, you can take these individually or cumulatively. What is your pleasure?
I've got a question on number two. Hey, Richard, um, why don't we use the, refresh my memory, why don't we use a local paper? Because they do print legal notices.
Uh, they, they don't have the distribution that's required for the standard to meet that as the publication.
Okay.
Second together?
I have no problem.
Well, entertain a motion.
Move to accept.
Second. It is been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda as presented, the consent agenda as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Item number three, consideration of possible action. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following proclamation. A proclamation recognizing graduating Montgomery High School Montgomery Bears that are serving their country. So I am going to read the proclamation. Do I need to read it, Susan?
Yes, please.
Okay, I, uh, hold on, sorry. I'm on a different computer and it is not on here. So let me pull that up. I apologize. I don't have it in front of me.
You'd like me to read that for you?
That would be wonderful. Thank you. I apologize. You got hung up on mine.
Okay, here, here's the body of the proclamation. Whereas the city of Montgomery, Texas, mayor and members of city council are pleased and honored to pay tribute to dedicated veterans who have served in this great nation with such distinction, both in peacetime and in war. And whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of the freedoms which we all continue to enjoy. And whereas Americans have an abiding faith in the ideals and strengths on which our great nation was founded, in our democratic process, and in the men and women of the armed forces who have served our country so well. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before our entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. And whereas the city would like to honor the Montgomery High School Montgomery Bears who have graduated in the last four years and that we know are now serving our country. Dylan Coleman, class of 2019, United States Marine Corps. Daniel McCoy Jr., class of 2019, United States Marine Corps. Isaiah Prince, class of 2019, United States Air Force. Davis Payne, class of 2019, United States Navy. Brady Smith, class of 2019, United States Navy. Noel Spurlock, class of 2019, United States Navy. Scott Spurlock, class of 2016, United States Navy. Whereas on this patriotic occasion, let us all commit ourselves to the great need of fostering a spirit of rededication to the ideals that all have served as the foundation of this great country. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Richard, you have a mic. I've got to pull up.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Now, therefore, I, mayor, countryman, mayor, and members of city council of the city of Montgomery do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2020, as Honor Our Veterans Day in the city of Montgomery and urge all of our citizens to honor our veterans and rededicate themselves to the preservation of our liberties under the Constitution proclaimed this day, 10th day of November, 2020. Heather, we're glad that you were able to come here and capture this. And we will have a signed document for you at City Hall.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a great evening.
Yes, ma'am. And by the way, Heather, also, this will also be on YouTube typically hours after the, after the meeting, should you want to go catch a glimpse under the city of Montgomery.
Forward it to each and every one of those individuals that I can forward it to.
Thank you so much. Yep, we look forward to celebrating Veterans Day tomorrow and today.
All right. Bye.
All right, item number four on your agenda. Consideration of possible.
Sorry, hold on one second. Do we, uh, need to make a motion to adopt the proclamation? Susan's kind of nodding. If so, then I move to adopt the proclamation as read by the mayor.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the proclamation read by the mayor. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the proclamation as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the proclamation as presented. Thank you, Councilwoman Huss. We'll miss you. Number four, consideration of possible action regarding certificate of acceptance for public water and public sanitary sewer infrastructure to serve the shops of Montgomery Retail Plaza Public Water Line Extension Development Number 1018, including acceptance of maintenance bond.
This works, serves the shops of Montgomery Retail Plaza, which is located on Highway 105 on the east side of the city. The engineer's memo is attached for your review, and the engineer is here attending this meeting if there's any questions or comments on the site. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. Just for frame of reference, this is a 300-foot water line that goes between the retail center spaces and the Starbucks along that driveway.
So, um, just a comment, your letter seems decidedly cursed and lacking in any request for additional, um, activity or comments. Is this because it was done so exactly to standards?
They've addressed the comments that we've had. Our, we, we had the final inspection. They've already addressed it. So that's all been completed. And the one-year warranty is from October 16th until 2021, October 16th. And they're just honestly, it's, Rainey Rome was the contractor who does great work. So the, the list of items that are on here were minor. It was painting the boxes and, and minor things just because again, it's, he knows what he's doing. We have good rep- reputation with him, and it was a simple project.
Okay, I was just noticing how, you know.
Yeah, it's pretty short.
The letter was. Okay, that's great.
I'll make a motion to issue a certificate of acceptance for public water and public sanitary sewer infrastructure to serve the shops of Montgomery Retail Plaza Public Water Line Extension, including acceptance of the maintenance bond, and begin the contractor's one-year warranty as of October 16th, 2020.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the issue and, and issue a certificate of acceptance for the public water and public sanitary sewer infrastructure to serve the shops of Montgomery Retail Plaza Public Water Line Extension, including the acceptance of maintenance bond, and begin the contractor's one-year warranty period as of October 16th, 2020. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of approving the, in issuing a certificate of acceptance for public water and public sanitary sewer infrastructure to serve the shops of Montgomery Retail Plaza Public Water Line Extension, including acceptance of maintenance bond, and begin the contractor's one-year warranty period as of October 16th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number five on your agenda, consideration of possible action warrant variances as recommended by the Montgomery Planning and Zoning Commission to City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 78, subdivision sections as detailed below. Eight, section 78 through 175 streets, a request for non-residential driveway spacing of approximately 60 feet adjacent left corner clearance and approximately 100 feet adjacent right corner clearance instead of the required 185 feet spacing on secondary streets for Moonover Montgomery located at 1062 Clepper Street. B, do we want to take these individually or altogether?
We can take them individually or as a group. That's yours and the council preference.
I think individually makes sense since they're each different sections of the code of ordinance.
Agree.
And different addresses.
All right, then let's just start with that. A, please.
Okay, we, we have information attached to each of these. Planning and zoning commission, uh, they've, they've considered and approved the request for the variance here. You have the city engineer's memo attached with the city engineer present. Dave McCorkidell worked with planning and zoning commission for all of these. So I'm going to turn these over to him for, for the specifics of those. Dave, do you want to give a brief overview of this item for council?
Sure, sure. Actually, I may toss it over to Chris because I think that Chris's understanding of kind of the technicality here that we're dealing with essentially, um, there's no way for the property, I guess a summary would be, there's no way for the property to have a driveway without this variance. And beyond that, I'll go to Chris to, to kind of hit any points he thinks are important.
That's really the main part of it is, you know, the, the ordinance says that you, we cannot deny a driveway for a commercial development if they don't have the spacing. So what they proposed is, is fine. Again, at off Clepper, the driveway for gyms is a back entrance. So there's not a lot of traffic coming in from that piece. So again, we didn't have any, right, any issues with that, with what they were proposing based on their spacing.
This driveway, when it comes into the circle, Chris, is it going to be kind of like one-way? Because I saw on the east side, the driveways are at an angle if you had to be coming in that direction. And?
Onto, so into the property?
Yeah, and you come in, you go to the right, there's two, two, I guess colleges would be right there.
Whoa, 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 whoa. So this is only in reference to their driveway onto Clepper. So from getting up to Clepper onto there, not their site plan specifically.
That may change, that may change in what you're saying.
Correct. And this variation, I believe, they, they've gone through a couple of variations. I don't know if this is their current or not, but they're, they're following the number of spacing requirements that are laid out in their specialties permit, one and a quarter for cottage.
Okay, thank you.
So basically what you're saying is this, um, we are required to give them driveway, driveway access to their property and that this driveway itself makes sense from a safety perspective, given the site plan itself, and then relative to all the other activity going on on Clepper.
It does. Because if you, you know, our main concern was one is you have the cross street immediately behind the community center, and I just blanked on the name, and then you have the gyms driveway. And so again, going either direction, it's, is kind of the best of where they have it. There's not a, a true determining factor decided one way or the next.
Okay.
Nated.
Beg of an answer.
Okay. Given that, then I move that we approve the request for a non-residential driveway spacing of approximately 60 feet adjacent left corner clearance and approximately 100 feet adjacent right corner clearance. And so the required 185-foot required spacing on secondary streets for Moonover Montgomery located at 1062 Clepper Street.
Second.
It is the mood and seconded that we approve the request for a non-residential driveway spacing of approximately 60 feet adjacent left corner clearance and approximately 100 feet adjacent right corner clearance instead of the required 185-foot spacing on secondary streets for Moonover Montgomery located at 1062 Clepper Street. This motion's debatable and amendable and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting and approving the request for a non-residential driveway spacing of approximately 60 feet adjacent left corner clearance and approximately 100 feet adjacent right corner clearance instead of the required 185-foot spacing on secondary streets for Moonover Montgomery located at 1062 Clepper Street, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will approve the request for a non-residential driveway spacing of approximately 60 feet adjacent left corner clearance and approximately 100 feet adjacent right corner clearance instead of the required 185-foot spacing on secondary streets for Moonover Montgomery located at 1062 Clepper Street. B, under, uh, this item on the agenda is section 78 through 96, working requirements. A request to use the TruGrid paving system in lieu of concrete or asphalt for the parking lot surface of the proposed Montgomery Food Truck Park located at 21806 Eva Street.
This is specifically to use an alternative surface, as it says here, you know, in lieu of concrete or, concrete or asphalt to allow for a more permeable, uh, surface there. I see that Jonathan White is on the call. Jonathan, did you want to speak to this item for your client? Or were you just, you're free to ask your questions?
No, I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions or speak on it. Um, if I may, mayor?
Yes, go right ahead, Jonathan. Thank you.
Um, so I think within the packet, I'm hoping you received kind of a preliminary site plan that showed the proposed developments. Does everybody have that?
Yeah.
They do.
So, um, the kind of idea and concept of this project is, it's still a moving target. We'll get into that in a minute. But essentially, this kind of wants to be a proposed food truck. And I'm going to use the word venue. Um, this is not going to be kind of just a, um, a low-end park. Um, so there's been several of these around. They've been very successful. Um, and, you know, financially, um, and really for just sheer cause of the idea of the venue, um, the TruGrid system, preserving canopy, uh, trees around picnic areas, you know, potential cornhole and volleyball courts and things like that. Like the TruGrid system really does blend well with the overall concept that they're trying to achieve. Um, so that is why we're trying to proceed with, um, a variance on the, uh, you know, white top concrete or really hot black asphalt. Uh, because it just doesn't really blend very well with the, um, product they're trying to put out. Um, mentioned that this site is, um, or, I guess the project is a moving target in the sense that we may do less parking initially, just sheer with, you know, COVID and, uh, things that may be coming up in the future, um, taking on a huge investment to putting all this down. TruGrid is actually a pretty expensive product. Uh, it's more expensive than concrete. Um, so just not really knowing what is to come. Uh, they may kind of shrink this down a little bit. There is an existing house on site. They may utilize that, um, as part of a rec area and things like that. So we, this may not be the final product, but, um, I just wanted y'all to know that when considering the variance. Um, but, you know, talking about the TruGrid product itself, um, it is a, a green pavement system. Um, it is a pervious surface in nature. It's about eight inches cross-sections of a crushed aggregate, um, with this kind of locked, um, grid system that's placed over the top and backfilled with that same aggregate. Um, we've chosen to do the heavy-duty load, uh, because it is HS20 loaded. So it will be able to carry the weight of a 80,000-pound fire truck. Um, it has a 25-year lifespan. Um, you know, it, it's a pretty good product. We've used it in a few locations. I believe, um, John DeCarter, when speaking to PNC, they had mentioned that they've used it on some projects of them, theirs as well. So, um, you know, I'm happy to, um, answer any questions you have on just the development itself or the pavement system. Um, but that's, uh, pretty much it.
It's just what they use at Hodge Podge Lodge Parking Lot?
This is a more, um, a far superior product.
It's a kind of a grid, basically the forest, the grid or the honeycomb is kind of, kind of like that, that what you're talking about, right?
It, it is, yeah. The, so they use a Hodge Podge Lodge, I think is just, um, just a lower-end product. This is more on the premium, um, spectrum, but it is the same concept. You know, it's a locking grid system that has an aggregate backfill that allows the pavement to still be permeable.
I think that Whole Foods uses this in their, in a couple of their parking lots. So it stands up to some pretty aggressive traffic, um, usage.
Correct. And in our memo, our only comment was to extend the driveway off of 105. Uh, the reason being is just the traffic coming off that that kind of, the, the turning movement at potential high speeds of coming off of 105 was what our concern was. But once you got really to that first drive aisle, which is about 75 feet, um, which is what was in our memo, we had no objection to using the, the system.
And we don't have a problem with that, obviously.
And there's 101 parking spots, is that what I read?
Yeah, on this one. I think the initial concepts, you know, um, now since it is moving that we, you know, we might not do the pavilion. It'll be a few food trucks. Um, and these, I'll tell you, the, the, the people that are doing this project are food truck owners. You know, they're not, it's not a series of, um, investors that are getting in this deal. Um, so they're kind of using their own capital to be able to kind of create their own product. They do like the idea of controlling the food as well. There's several of these venues that are around that you get people that are coming in and out, and they may not have a, uh, superior, you know, a, a good food truck. They might not be able to offer good food, or they're constantly breaking down, and you get bad reviews on your developments and on your business on that end. So if they can control that, then they can essentially control the business and, and make sure it's a premium product. But, um, we'll probably do a lot less parking upfront, um, at least to be able to meet code minimums and things like that. Um, and then as hopefully the business can expand and they can get, continue to get capital, the project can expand to this level. This is the ultimate goal, but the initial phase will likely be on a much smaller scale.
Just plain defense, what happens to this property, you know, TruGrid, I've talked, I've talked about food trucks, and I was hoping, I've had a couple of developers looking at Deacon Baldi's a couple of years ago, bringing them here, but it seems to be maybe just a fad. What happens when that fad goes away? What happens to this area?
Well, um, hopefully it doesn't. Um, uh, you know, they have a pretty, the people that have this, they have a pretty good inroads with, uh, the cornhole community. They plan on hosting large events, um, on this, and they hopefully can expand that to like the volleyball community and things like that. So they're hoping to be able to like host events. Um, some of the events have been televised by ESPN. So, you know, that's the kind of thing that they're trying to bring here, that the fad just won't fade away. I mean, it's like self-storage and RV parks. I don't know when those are ever going to go away. Um, everybody's trying to do them, so.
I could, they're, they're bringing other things and events to the property instead of, uh, yeah, in the event that it does go away. I don't know that it will or it doesn't have a crystal ball, but, um, with the concerns that the developers I've spoken with, you know, in a couple of years, if that, if that's no longer than what happened. So I thought I'd, okay.
And, and hopefully, you know, everything's kind of tucked in the back. And I had produced, I'm happy to share with it offline, uh, an aerial, um, overlaying on top of this. It just shows how much like canopy that we're trying to consider. And the back area really has a lot of really nice oak trees. So if we limit the development initially to where we have a drive that comes in, a small parking lot in the rear, you know, everything's, we tuck way off of 105. Uh, really, we're going to try to use the natural vegetation. So it's not like we're going to just clear a bunch and lay this big asphalt thing. So let's say the business doesn't thrive, and it just kind of takes a step back. You're not going to be looking at a big ugly ice wall. It's just going to get overgrown. It's just kind of going to work this today.
We had talked, um, I think the first time I saw this was maybe five years ago, the TruGrid system. And, you know, the ordinance was really, um, written as, you know, a very meat and potatoes type of thing. And, you know, the, the system was more of a caviar type thing where, you know, we wouldn't put it in, and it doesn't work for every, every type system. But, um, you know, this is really kind of with what we had talked about in the past of improving, you know, variances are for oftentimes, you know, where it doesn't fit the ordinance, and we'd like it to be upgrading what the ordinance offers rather than, you know, downgrading and providing, you know, less than what we want for our residents. I think that, you know, the system is, is better than asphalt. It, you know, provides, you know, the, the permeability and the lower heat and, you know, smaller impact, um, on the environment. I think that it's a better-than system and a solution for parking and for our city.
Is there a name to it, Jonathan?
Montgomery food trucks right now. That's all I got.
All right.
We're not ready to root all the actual food trucks, but I think, uh, I think they'll be exciting once they're actually, uh, able to, to come to the table with more details.
Great. I think it's a great idea, and I think we should go for it. I think it'd be good for the city, but I, I like the, uh, the different technology that, um, is being utilized. And I see it as, as, you know, certainly beneficial, more beneficial than asphalt or concrete. So I think it's an excellent product, it seems to be. Having said that, I'm going to make a motion. Move to, uh, accept the variance to use the TruGrid paving system in place of asphalt or concrete for the parking lot at 21806 Eva Street in Montgomery.
Second.
It is the mood and seconded that we accept the request to use the TruGrid paving system in lieu of concrete or asphalt for the parking lot surface of the proposed Montgomery Food Truck Park located at 21806 Eva Street. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now.
Would this, would this motion include the 75-foot that was recommended by Johnson Carter? From the main road 105?
Is that a, I mean, should it be a separate motion? Um, I was under the impression the motion was just about the TruGrid paving system. At least that's what the recommendation.
75 was already included in there on the, their plot, you know, or the?
It's a little bit different. So it's, I think it's, I think they're currently proposing 55, 45, 55. Now, I, I think that to be efficient wording the motion that makes it more general than 75 feet, since it does sound like their site plan is changing, that, you know, essentially they provide sufficient, uh, uh, sufficient driveway of concrete coming off of 105 as approved by staff or something to that effect, just to, so they don't have to come back if they change their site plan slightly.
I think you can sort it out when you do the plot. I think you can sort it out when you do the plot, can't you?
Yeah, when they do their site plan, that's all going to be.
Yeah, that's fine with us, absolutely.
On the second for the motion, is it Rebecca Hus was second?
No, I did not for one.
DJ?
DJ, I had two, it sounded like two, okay, thank you.
So we're just leaving the motion uh alone and we'll deal with it administratively as it comes. Yeah, seventy-five, but I think that.
All those in favor of approving the request to a green paving system in lieu of concrete or asphalt for the paving lot surface of the proposed Montgomery Food Truck Park located at twenty-one eight oh six Eva Street, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the request to use the true green paving system in lieu of concrete or asphalt for the parking lot surface of the proposed Montgomery Food Truck Park located at twenty-one eight oh six Eva Street. Adam C. on the uh, under number five on your agenda, section seventy-eight through three, proposed statutory authority territorial jurisdiction, D. Water Sanitary Sewer Service. A request to waive the plating requirement for a property to receive water and sanitary sewer service for Texas Twist and Shake LLC located at the northeast corner of Caroline and Liberty Streets in the historic downtown.
On this item, yeah, this is, this is a lot that's already been paved. It's been previously used as a parking lot downtown. It's a former louder property and uh it's going to be used, have temporary uh surface uses, but there's not going to be new, at this time, permanent structures erected with the pavings not being removed to put new permanent buildings in place. And so that's why staff is supportive of the uh, the variance request in this particular item. And I believe the uh, you know, the requesters here online, Mr. Clevenger, did you want to uh speak to any of the specific uh details here? And you're on mute if you wanted to, otherwise we'll continue on.
I did send a message for him to unmute if he wanted to talk.
Otherwise, well, yeah, otherwise, Dave, is there anything else from uh planning and zoning that I did not, might want to add?
Um, I don't think so, only to say that uh uh due to my vacation schedule and Chris's, uh, we were out on opposing.
Good evening.
The P and Z did not have the benefit, and it's entirely my fault, uh being able to have the opinion of uh the engineer when they made their uh recommendation to um approve the variance. Again, um, the the rationale that that uh, I guess that I follow on it is to get water and sewer taps, you have to plat when there's really nothing on, there's no development actually taking place. And, you know, Chris and I, I think are both, you know, on the same page that we understand where the other one is coming from on it. But uh, to me, you know, the wa- it's, it's almost like the chicken and the egg uh when you get down to it in that is, are utility taps in and of themselves development? Or is the stuff that comes after the taps, the development?
Yeah, Mr. Clevenger, I see you've unmuted yourself. Did you want to give maybe the brief uh ten thousand foot view of what you're looking to do here?
Yes, uh, thank you. So um, I'm bringing in a food uh vendor uh piece of equipment. And the type of equipment has it to where it, I I can't really make it. It won't be as mobile as as a typical food truck because of the machines inside cannot be powered off of a generators. So I need the constant source of electricity. So with that being said, uh with the lot being in town and having the uh access to town water, town sewer, I just wanted to make a clean uh uh, you know, situation by hooking up the town water and the town sewer to it so that way it's just, you know, a nice neat package for the entity itself. If that helps, Richard.
Well, Bill, you will have some sort of, it'll be secure, so other uh I call it bandit trucks or something, uh food trucks or something of that nature uh wouldn't be able to come in and utilize your, your equipment, your water sewer taps?
Oh, absolutely, it'd be, you know, a nice neat package, secure. We wouldn't be like, you know, there wouldn't be any fly by nights in the middle of the night coming up to hook up to anything. It would, it would all be, you know, done nice, like I explained to the P and Z uh team. Uh, I don't really believe in doing anything that looks, that would un uh, you know, bring any kind of detriment to the town or the aesthetics to the historic district. So it would be nice and clean, secure and done by a professional uh contractors that do business in the town currently.
Where did the sewer taps or the sewer lines run in that area?
They're along the gallon, so on the backside of the property. And then the water is on the, excuse me, and then the water is on the opposite side of Caroline.
So then would the sewer pipe run above ground then, all the way from the front part of the lot to the back part of the lot?
No, it'd be buried. Everything would be buried. And then what I also uh explained to Richard and Dave while we were out there the one day was that there's a currently a uh electric pole on the property that the town's currently utilizing. And, you know, it was mentioned that we'd have to move that pole across this and I, you know, said there's no need to move the pole and create the town, the city anymore expense than needed. I mean, you can let that pole sit there, why have to uproot something that's currently working right now?
So for water and sewer, I understand that the trailer's got to use it. Is there going to be a bathroom on site? Is that also like a restroom?
No, I have access to a restroom within distance.
So is this semi-permanent or is it semi, you said it wasn't, it couldn't be moved?
It's semi-permanent, ma'am.
This is right next to my property. I have no problem with it at all and I think it'll be good, you know, for the city and bring, bring more families downtown since it's a different product than uh is currently being offered downtown in the historic district.
Yeah, I mean, a- and as I explained to the P and Z uh group in the fact that we are totally being uh, we want to complement the historic downtown, all the restaurants, all the people, including with the fact that, you know, I know there's some parking there and and you know, we're, we're open to work with all groups during festival time. Um, you know, strategically, the the restaurant right next to us, which is the Cozy Grape, we're not here to make a hindrance to the city. We're here to complement and continue and not make a major footprint per se as uh, you know, taking away, like I said, we're here to complement all businesses and the communities itself.
Uh, Mr. Clevenger, when we met out there, as I understood it, tell me, please correct me if I state this incorrectly, but some of the, the whole area is used for, as parking space today. Would some of that space uh that's on your property remain available for parking at times?
Yes, sir, yeah, just as we talked about.
Okay, and 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 just, and you mentioned this earlier, but I just want to make sure we're clear for the record. You understand it's your responsibility to make sure that the, both the wastewater and water service there is secure if your, you know, if your truck is not hooked up to it so that no one else can come across and and just have access to it, correct?
Absolutely.
Sorry, Chris. Just, just to be clear, kind of our memo, so our recommendation, the, the request in front of council tonight is just a variance to not have to go through the plating process for this property. So it's not yes or no on the development, we don't have any concerns with the development itself. It's just the, the plating process. And the what P and Z approved was to recommend the variance. Uh, our recommendation is is to not, and the reason is, is because then our, our thought is that it is a development of the property. So it follows the, the rule of a development plat. It doesn't need to go through the full process. It's something that's prepared by our surveyor, which he already has. And it's just like we did on the Heritage Parking Lot and other things of that nature. And again, it is just because i- in, in my opinion, he has developed a property uh based on those two definitions I put in my letter. So again, it's nothing against the development, it's just the fact of skipping the step of doing the development plat is the only, only question tonight.
So P and Z was aware of your comments and they still wanted to approve it?
I, this memo did not make it to P and Z. Uh, I did not, I was not in attendance and I don't believe if that came up as a discussion point that I don't, Catherine or Dave would have to.
Right, no, um, you know, and again, you, uh, the, the fact that uh was not on uh the P and Z agenda was just, you know, the uh ball got dropped on uh my end with going on vacation and then the very next week, uh Chris was out, so again, they, and I've spoken with uh Jeff Waddell about it, who's on the call tonight, but you know, just about, you know, that, that, you know, just to ensure that that, you know, is not uh going to happen in the future.
What is the advantage of plating versus not plating? Sorry, but what is the advantage? Why would we, why would we want to platter, why would we not want to platter?
So from the city perspective, you know, having it plotted, it it sets it, so it sets your building lines, it sets any easements, setbacks, et cetera, that are required uh based on that. The development plat is the simplest form that you can do or that's allowed by the ordinance, which can be done by a surveyor, uh which he already has a survey of the site. So it, and it's approved on the staff level, so it doesn't have to come back in front of P and Z or council with the approval of development plat. Though the, in, in maybe Mr. Clevenger's hands are better, but you know, the, the benefit to not doing it is a time and cost perspective because obviously there is an expense to print that document, preparing the request, uh but it's minimal in comparison to going through the process. And again, it just helps, you know, as this, as this goes down the road and, you know, this food truck goes away and now there's a permanent water and sewer connection there, it becomes, you know, a permanent snow cone stand or something like that, that, that would definitely kind of fall, because the, the difference here is the whole permanent versus non-permanent. I, I think is kind of where it, it's a gray area of, is it a development? Um, so, you know, our recommendation is that you, you have all the properties that you're serving water and sewer are platted and that is a rule that you have them platted.
We've not made any.
So the ones, I was thinking about, you know, ones that are similar to this. So you, I thought of Snowballs on, by James Hardware, it's on a planted property. It has a separate water and sewer connection uh for that. The food truck park that we talked about the last ordinance, they're going to have to go through the plating process. Other developments, anything, any new development has been plotted. So the Best Donuts, you know, they tore down and rebuilt, they went through the plating process. Um, a- at least since it are tenor and city engineer, I can't re- can't think of any taps that were allowed specifically for commercial or non-single family uh that did not have a plat on the property of some type.
So that's typically what we ask for, that we haven't seen, we've not made exceptions.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, just worth noting too, that, that this may be the only time that, that um a business has asked for taps and it's not, you know, actually proposing to build anything, you know. So I think there's a, you know, just another point of consideration.
Right, and the fact that there is no permanent structure being so that if in the future there would be something constructed that would have a foundation, a pad, et cetera, then, you know, I could really foresee it. But, you know, being the owner of the property and not having any foreseeable uh structures, development per se, as far as a, you know, permanent building structure in the, any near future uh or foreseeable future.
What happens, Bill, if this is wildly successful and you decide to go ahead and build a historic one, if you will, like a little drive-through or whatever, but then would we have to go back and ask him to platter the new building? Or how would that work if we approve the variance tonight, then how would that work?
Yeah, we see the variance as operating only for this truck that, you know, for the, for bringing a truck item out there. The minute that a, some kind of a permanent structure or its own freestanding structure that's not on wheels is looking to be added, then it's going to trigger the plating requirement.
Correct, Richard.
For semi-permanent, that was the description.
So that makes sense then to just put it in the motion to dispel any doubt that, you know, this is purely for um the current situation and either for a change of use or a change of ownership that a plat would be required.
Uh, I think staff would have no objection to that.
Also, uh, wouldn't that affect, Chris, the size of the tap and also the impact fee related to that tap size?
Correct, so if if it's not platted theoretically, he would follow in the two hundred percent rule, not the impact fee rule. Um, so the, the ordinance states that, you know, if you're prior to the impact fee ordinance, you pay a cost plus two hundred percent, post-impact fee ordinance, you pay the impact fee and then true cost for the.
So if you, if we required to platter like everybody else, then you had to pay an impact fee?
That's correct.
So this actually gets around the impact fee, but it's called uh the two hundred percent?
Right, he, he wouldn't pay the impact fee, but he would pay the cost plus two hundred percent.
Which is almost equal according to P and Z, right, Jeff?
It, it's, it's a pretty close, pretty close number, especially when we're talking, I think the, the amount of water is a standard residential tap that are residential sized tap that they're.
Right, I wouldn't even be utilizing more than a single-family home because I'm, I'm not cooking anything. There's no grease trap, there's nothing.
Thank you.
Yeah, P and Z has approved it, you know, and staff has no problem with it. Um, I think it is, it's kind of a unique situation and I, I certainly think, I mean, there's not going to be any permanent as of right now, no permanent building, Chris, you keep talking about development, but this is a food trailer and it's semi-permanent. And again, if it changes, then the city addresses that situation.
Well, let's go ahead and make the. Let's go ahead and make the motion um with the caveat that um any change of use or change of ownership revokes the variance. Alan, is that okay for a variance like this? I mean, the tap will still be there, but um then obviously the need for um a plat will come back up.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you can certainly condition it uh at that condition where, you know, a change would then necessitate the de- the development plant, plat.
This is going to set a standard for moving forward of others asking for a variance on that. But I guess the, the good thing is it's a residential and not a, not a commercial, even if it's on a commercial property.
Yeah, in this particular case where, you know, this, I think it's such a unique situation and you're putting handcuffs on it with the motion that's been put forward, you know. Yeah, and this also had a, you know, staff concurrence before it ever came to P and Z or council. So I think, I think that's a very uh narrow path for anyone to try to replicate. It's prob- I, I don't see another situation, you know, matched it unless it matches everything exactly.
Tom, um, you've typically been against food trucks. Are you sure you're, this is good? I mean, I'm, I'm excited to see that you like them and that you like previous.
You know, I, I mentioned the food truck development that Chris Cheatham's working on. I mean, sorry, Josh Cheatham's working on. I think it's great. Um, I, I don't like a mishmash of food trucks in the historic district because um they don't really pay property taxes and there's a lot of reasons why I don't. But this is uh, you know, Bill bought the property, he owns the property, he's paying property tax. Um, just like any other business downtown, it just happens to be, um, it's a semi-portable trailer rather than a permanent structure.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you were good with it because like I said.
Yeah, I don't have one with it all. I think it's something new, unique, and I think it'd be, it would be, bring people downtown.
And just one last point, uh, when you all do get to see the design of it, it will truly be a nice compliment to Montgomery, Texas.
And you are, there are ordinances on how that's got to look because they're in the historical district.
According to P and Z, everything looks, I mean, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't look like, and like I said to them respectfully, I'm not. and like I said to them respectfully, I'm not downplaying anybody that has an enterprise and is out here working on behalf of their livelihoods. But just to use a generic term, it does not look like a typical taco truck.
Just want to make sure that, that, yeah, I mean, I don't, I would hate for you to have it painted or wrapped or whatever the words are and then it not be aesthetically pleasing and then have to go back and do that again or be against the ordinance. So that's, that's why I wanted to mention it.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
How soon are we looking at thinking like that, Bill? Maybe this is not related to the current topic, but how soon would you be getting open or seeing this going?
I would like to bring the trailer in probably the middle of the month, have it set there so that we can begin to start the process of, you know, checking out measurements, lines, all that. I mean, the, the trailer is ready. It's just the fact of getting it set and properly marked and, you know, go through the process of submitting the applications, you know, for the water and the sewer and getting the electric hooked up. And I'm in no major rush, but just want to start getting things where they need to be.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the request to waive the plating requirement for a property to receive water and sanitary sewer service for Texas Twist and Shakes LLC located at the northeast corner of Caroline and Liberty Streets in the historic downtown. This variance is void upon change of use or change of ownership.
Second.
Second.
It is the move in second that we request to waive the plating requirement for a property to receive water and sanitary sewer service for Texas Twist and Shakes LLC located at the northeast of Caroline and Liberty Streets in the historic downtown district. This, this variance is void upon change of owner or what was the other, the ownership or?
Change of use.
The change of use. Change of use. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It's open for discussion.
The only comment I would say was, maybe next time, I guess P and Z or our staff could be sure that our city engineer gets a chance to look at the stuff before it gets this far down the road. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the request to waive the plating requirement for a property to receive water and sanitary sewer service for Texas Twist and Shakes LLC located at the northeast corner of Caroline and Liberty Streets in historic downtown Duster. This variance is void upon change of use or ownership. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will approve the, to waive the plating requirement for a property to receive water and sanitary sewer service for Texas Twist and Shakes LLC located at the northeast corner of Caroline and Liberty Streets in the historic downtown district. This variance is void upon change of use or ownership. Item number six on your agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance by an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending chapter 64 Peddlers, Solicitors and Vendors, Article 2, Permit Section 64 through 30, Classification Terms Fee and Section 64 through 31, Application of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Montgomery, Texas to increase the term for permits, one month to six months, amend associated fees and amend certain application requirements for peddler, solicitors, hawkers and vendors, repealing all other conflicting ordinance provisions, providing a separability clause, provide, providing for a Texas Open Meetings Act clause and providing an effective date.
All right, you may recall this ordinance was revised earlier this year in August. You know, as staff reviewed it after it was being codified, realized there are a couple items we wanted to come back and revisit with council. One is, and we'd intended to do this first one at that time, somehow it got out of the process is to add a six-month term option in addition to the one-month term for the permits. You know, for all classes, peddlers, hawkers, solicitors, transient dealers, mobile food units and roadside food vendors. We really, this is aimed at the food trucks that want to regularly come to the city because have, there, there's a certain hurdle that comes with having to come in and apply for that permit each month. And there have been some complaints about that, so we, we still make it easier for them to do repetitive business with the city. And that's contained within section 64 dash 30. And also, we want to better specify the entity information we're receiving from vendors. Essentially, we were getting very basic information. Now we're requesting the same information we would have for any business that's permitted doing business in the city in section 64 dash 31. And those are the primary changes here. One of our concerns there was, you know, if you had, some of these classes are people that might be operating door-to-door, operating from temporary locations. We have a better record of who it is that is operating there, should we need to know that information later.
Does this also allow us to 100% capture tax dollars, tax revenue?
That, well, we're still dependent on the businesses properly filing them, but that is one thing that we'll be discussing with them at the time of permitting is reminding them of the legal requirement, especially having them coming back repetitively for six months, optimally with a permit. You know, we, we want to make sure certainly that we're properly capturing, you know, every tax, tax dollar that we should be capturing.
Richard, do we address insurance issues at all, liability, insurance?
That is one of the requirements for being able to get the permit.
Okay.
And, and in order to get the permit at the six-month level, you know, they have to, they, they have to have that through, you know, at least through the deadline.
Okay, so they have to provide proof of insurance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you still working on the other sections? I know, I think you had some other sections that you, we gave you recommendations to change, right? I think in August.
I'm not sure what you're specifying.
I think the motion that we made in August included changes that they would have made before that they, before they codified it. So we made the motion subject to changes like the hours.
Right, it was ours.
Right, so that, that doesn't include this because that was part of the motion was to change the hours.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the additional changes to the ordinance amending chapter 64.
Second.
It is the move in second that we adopt the amendments to chapter 64 and make, and add the changes. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it is open for discussion. All those in favor of, I'm sorry, was there someone? All those in favor of accepting the adoption of amendments to chapter 64, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the adoption of amendments to chapter 64 of the code of. Next item of agenda, next item on agendas, item number seven. Consideration of possible action regarding review of the City of Montgomery Draft Comprehensive Plan.
The draft comprehensive plan was presented to City Council on October 27, 2020 and discussed. Staff has taken input from that discussion and made changes to the draft comprehensive plan, which resulted in the updated version that is being presented tonight. The changes made include updating the draft plan to more clearly state the intent and desire to provide mobility and connectivity throughout all community areas in the City of Montgomery, provide clearer detail to elements of the plan and include general grammar and descriptive updates as well to the plan. The city has been working on the comprehensive plan for some time. It's important to note for the record that this draft comprehensive plan was developed through a series of five community meetings held during 2019 to receive input from both residents and local businesses. The city also held a virtual town hall meeting on July 8, 2020 to review the original version of, of the draft of this draft comprehensive plan. The actual draft document was originally developed by Walter Peacock, a community planning specialist with Texas A&amp;M University's Texas C Granting Community Resilience Collaborative Programs. Comprehensive plans guide public policy in areas such as transportation, utilities, land use, recreation and housing, while also serving to assist city council when setting budget priorities for future projects. Additionally, the plan serves as the legal basis for future land use zoning and is required for many grant funding opportunities. Please note that there are population-based numbers included, which shouldn't use census numbers versus locally derived numbers. That means, you know, the city will need to update such census-based numbers within the comprehensive plan after new census data becomes available to the city next year. And during, since the last council meeting, we did, we, we, we also received some additional comments from council. And Dave McOrkardale did the bulk of the work and, well, really practically 100, basically 100% of the work and I'm here talking about it, but I'm going to turn the floor over to him so he can hit some of the specific details versus the broad brush I just glossed over it. So, so with that, I'll turn the floor to Dave.
Here in council, good evening again. You know, as you can, you know, you've probably seen, you know, a noticeable difference just in the overall formatting and a little bit of, you know, kind of some of the, you know, I guess just the cleanliness or, you know, the overall feel of the document. But, you know, maybe rather than hit on all the highlights, you know, I'd be happy to address any specific questions or comments that the council has.
I think it's a lot cleaner document, Dave, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Randy Burley approved.
Well, I, I know we have additional comments from Randy. I also know Councilman Wilkerson came in and spent some time with Dave last week going through the document and.
I talked to some of Councilman Wilkerson's comments real quick, you know, looked like, you know, they were kind of, you know, they, they really did touch on all aspects of the plan. And, you know, really as I dug through it, you know, while, you know, say in, you know, there were a couple instances where the North Side or, you know, the MLK community was called out a lot of the times in the document, I guess, where you're kind of flying at 30,000 feet. You don't get down to specifics like, you know, and a flashing yellow light at a specific intersection in town or, you know, sidewalks on a specific street in town. It talks more about the, you know, the broad level of, you know, the mobility in town or the traffic safety in town. And as I was talking with Councilman Wilkerson earlier this evening, you know, trying to kind of explain, you know, why there may not, you know, be a, you know, a definite, here's exactly what was changed. I'd be happy to run through those points if you guys would like to kind of show you where in the, in the plan, those comments are addressed. So you just tell me how you'd like to, to run through it and I'll be glad to.
Dave, you probably, you know, we talked about some of the, I don't know if you call them sidewalk, walk, pathway, the, the traffic conditions on MLK, you know, the, the signs would be something that they could include. One thing, you know, we want to make it everything equal and not just that I'm, I'm the one that repped in the north. I think we all repped in all parts of, of Montgomery and that, you know, because, you know, I had concern, people say they ride and look at the park, all the park got a bench, but Homecoming Park, and I'm, and I'm always asked why, why that one don't have a bench like, like all the other parks, the big black benches with the stone. I can't answer that. I said, I, and Biden, I joke with him, I say, I don't get somebody to take it, huh? And, but I, but I know they're pretty, pretty heavy, but, you know. So when we start out, our vantage point always has been, is the way you stand, it's the way, where you stand in life is always how you see things. And where I stand, where we stand, we didn't see that inclusion, the comprehensive plan where we would, would tie into the, the culture and the history and the makeup of Montgomery. And that's one of the things that we want, everybody want to be, feel this unity in and to be a part of it. And it, it, it's not, not a whole lot, we can, you know, we're going, we'll probably continue to push sidewalks because that's a safety issue. And I think we could do that and, and tie into the, to the historical district somewhere. We can go back and clean up a lot of the history of it, you know, the guy that wrote the history, whoever he was out of, out of Katie, he, he must have interviewed a lot of older, older people. I don't know where he got a lot of his research from in describing the history of it. And that, that's kind of easy to clean, to go back and do. But the, the, as far as the development or something like that, or sidewalks, or putting in aesthetic beauty or trying to get more grants for homes, these are some of the things that, that will benefit not only that part of town, but the whole city. Because if that, if, if everybody rides up, that, that means it's more revenue for the city, not just to limit one part of town. And that's some of the things that we can, we can continue to work on as a group. Where, you know, we probably don't have to tackle them all, we can put in and say, well, we do the housing. Well, we do the sidewalks or we do the, the history. We can start at one element and work our way through this, this comprehensive plan. And for some reason, comprehensive is not reaching back and getting the people that feel like they all left out all the time. And so we got to keep working on that. And, but, you know, I, I like the sign that, you know, on some of the pages, this, this page is left blank and they got the design of Montgomery, somewhere along in Montgomery. Oh, would be some nice sign to put up, easily it's on side of buildings somewhere. But they would be nice to put up throughout. And those are some of the ideas. I got a lot more, but I'll be quiet and let somebody else talk. Because I'm not, I'm not the only one, I, I mean, I'm not the only council person. Like I say, we, we're supposed to represent everybody.
Well, and I certainly for one that, you know, as, as we continue forward, wanting, want to keep hearing stuff like that from you, Councilman, you know, there, you know, there's some of the, some of the things that were, were get down into specific details that were discussed at the last meeting. Those are items that Public Works is working schedule and I would expect will have in place, you know, by, by springtime, I'd say March 31st easily. And, and some of those address some of the park items, some of the roadway signs. We're looking at, you know, in regards to one item in terms of sidewalk space. We're trying, we're trying to get our heads wrapped around quantifying the, what in the cost would be. The issue along 149 is, you know, that's a state highway and not a city road. So that's a state right-of-way, not a city right-of-way. You know, once we have a cost there, you know, we'll look at trying to coordinate with Tech dot to see what it would take to coordinate with them on that. But again, those are, those are actions that we're planning, you know, you know, here in the, in the short to medium-term future as well. So I, I want, definitely want to say for the record here, you know, that we're actively working on some of these items right now and plan to have those addressed in the coming months. And so I realize that doesn't make here overnight, but I, I want to make sure it's understood that that work is, is moving itself forward as well.
Would I, would I state representative and county representative and with, do they, we have a good relationship with them to work with Tech dot?
Well, we've got some of our own relationship with Tech stuff that I feel is pretty good as well as, you know, my, my intention is if necessary to approach some of our state delegation, both at the state representative and particularly at the state senate level, if that's a place where we might need assistance. And I, I mean, I.
And when we do reach out to them, we got to let them know that they represent everybody, not just certain people. Because we never see them in parts of the communities, so, you know. And I know they realize they don't have to because they're going, the, the votes that they get going, going outnumber that. So, but still, you know, you're supposed to be, we're supposed to represent everybody and we need to sit at the table and talk to them and let them know that.
Yes, sir, and certainly the northern corridors and, you know, it, it's an important gateway and entry into the town, not just from the residents who live on the North Side of the town, but for the people from the town from the North.
Right.
Quick question for you guys, this is Kevin. So Richard, I talked, I spoke to you about this earlier, you mentioned that there, I think you're taking, you said several, several requirements or concerns were, were. Quick question for you guys. This is Kevin. Um, so Richard, I talked, I spoke to you about this earlier. You mentioned that there, I think you're taking, you say several, several requirements or concerns were, were, um, put into the document and if you have, have Dave speak to them specifically, he, so they, they were or they were not put into the comprehensive plan? And it sounds like to me TJ saying they're not there and now I'm hearing that they're also not there.
No. I mean, uh, Richard, I'll be happy to jump in on that. Uh, many of them were already in there. And again, if you'd like me to run through kind of the, you know, the comparative list of, you know, Councilman Wilkerson's comments with kind of where I believe that they're, you know, in the comp plan right now, I'm sure happy to do that.
Dave, let's go ahead and do that. So we have that, you know, capture the direction.
Uh, the first couple of comments again, we're on what I would call, uh, uh, mobility. Two of the comments were, uh, provide sidewalks for improved conditions between the North Side and downtown. Again, we just spoke to that and it being a TechStop road. Um, and then sidewalks along MLK, which we've already touched on as well. On, if you'll go to page 84 of the draft comp plan. That's in your packet. And the, uh, you know, kind of this first, you know, few sentences here, you know, speak to the fact that the city needs these sidewalks. So, you know, there's not, you know, I live on Old Plantersville Road. There's not a sidewalk on Old Plantersville Road. But the comp plan, again, at kind of the 30,000 foot elevation, isn't going to say, you know, we need a sidewalk on Old Plantersville Road or on, um, MLK. It's, it's going to say that there are, you know, sidewalk issues. Um, then if you jump over to page 97, which is going to be in the goals. And there you're going to see, you know, prioritize improvements needed along existing roads, taken into consideration as to school, existing infrastructure and things like that. That's really where, you know, sort of the, well, you know, how many folks are walking down, um, Old, uh, Plantersville Road? Well, there's nine. Uh, how many folks are down, um, MLK? Okay. You know, our data says that there's, uh, 35. So that's where the sidewalk, you know, focus or the sidewalk project, you know, that's how that thing is born. Um, essentially, so, you know, being, so that's the, an example on the sidewalks. With the transportation, uh, kind of, there was a few comments on that. One was install a caution light at the intersection of the curve, um, at FM 149 and, um, MLK Drive. Again, that's a TechStop road. That's certainly something that the city can reach out to. But, um, it's, there's not a, yeah, kind of an intersection by intersection, you know, look, that's in the, uh, the comp plan. Install speed limit signs, um, in both directions along MLK Drive. Well, there's speed limit signs there. There's certainly opportunity for us to look, you know, as Mike and I were out today looking at, to see if we could add any, along with some, uh, slow, uh, you know, uh, some signs alerting, um, cars to the fact that there's, uh, kids at play and, you know, being able to play. But if you look at sort of, you know, those kind of, you know, the speed limit signs, signage and, uh, the caution lights. If you go to page 95, if you're still on 97, um, if you go to page 95, uh, again, kind of on the transportation goals. You'll see where, you know, these, you know, these studies and, you know, mobility, you know, items are all addressed, you know, the, uh, the traffic calming devices. Again, it doesn't talk to it street by street, but it speaks to the need for these items on, um, all of our city streets. And then if you'll jump back over to page 60. Get there, where it talks about, um, a safe and efficient roadway network there in the middle of the page. Now, you know, one of the things that, you know, that the, that the complaint does or, or, or that it recommends is a traffic study at, you know, to identify these high crash areas. Now, we know based on, you know, the number of times, you know, drivers have gone off the road and hit the telephone pole or, or, uh, the power pole up there in the curve, that that's a high crash area, you know? So calling it out here in the plan, you know, certainly makes sense because it's one of the more memorable spots for, you know, routine accidents, um, in the city. Another topic was housing and, you know, the two of TJ's points were the need to address aging homes in the area. Um, and, you know, either through a replacement or through a grant program like the home programs or, or the home grant, um, homes that were just finished up. And, you know, again, assuring that affordable homes are available throughout the city. And if we jump over to page 49.
Dave, let me just interrupt you for a second and then I'll cut back to you and cause, uh, and, and I should have jumped, got you right before you mentioned the housing. But you, where you touched in a number of the things in, in a variety of areas there, you know, I mentioned earlier that, you know, we have some, you know, because of the difficulties of it being the TechStop right of way on 149, you know, while we're trying to ascertain what cost would be. Then we'll be approaching TechStop to try to find ways that we can work with them to make a sidewalk space, you know, work between as a, as a mobility corridor, both for, uh, foot traffic as well as, uh, potential bike traffic from, uh, from that north end of town into the downtown area. Some of the things that we're coordinating with Public Works on that will occur as I, as I touched on earlier, uh, during the remainder of this fiscal year is some of the specifics we've looked at are, you know, for, uh, some of the upgrading, some of the speed limit signs to types of signage that have, uh, have lights on to get better attention and, uh, you know, for the MLK corridor. Uh, I also had a conversation since the last council meeting with the police chief so that they will look into options to help control speeding there. I, I know a lot of people, their first reactions are go to, uh, speed bumps or speed humps. That's not always the first direction the police department wants to go. So it is on their radar and looking for alternatives. And maybe that's the right direction. Maybe that's not the right direction to speed bumps or speed hunts. Uh, but definitely that's a, a law enforcement question. And so that's a, that's where we will take our keys, our cues off of, uh, from the law enforcement personnel. I, I believe it came up earlier about park benches and that's something that Public Works is putting on order to make sure that we have the same type of benches that are a variety of other places in the city, you know, at, uh, Homecoming Park as well. Uh, also the basketball court over at Homecoming Park is going to be, uh, you know, it's going to be painted, you know, and, and basically updated and refreshed over there. Also a fresh look at the pavilion space and, you know, the park itself. Recently, uh, some of the parking bollards at the park were, were painted, uh, you know, as part of what we're doing all across the city to put, uh, Texas flag, uh, emblem on, on a selection of parking bollards all, all around the city. And, uh, trying to remember if I, if I left anything out as I kind of rushed through those, uh, uh, you know, Dave, from our discussion that we had, uh, coordinating with Mike, was there anything that I left off of there?
Not that I can think of.
And, and those are items that we're working on, you know, specifically in this fiscal year. Those are the kind of, those are the kind of specific details that don't get called out, you know, in, in the broader brush that you paint in the comprehensive plan. Where, uh, whereas, uh, Dave was pointing out where, uh, you know, it's very, you know, specific neighborhoods and roads and examples, you know, have been updated to be included in the comprehensive plan, uh, that will occur in different parts of the city. Uh, definitely inclusions of, um, the Martin Luther King Jr. As a corridor off of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard specifically as a corridor and other references to the North Side as well as other areas of town. So I, you know, I believe we've met that threshold of, of showing, you know, that we're trying to meet the accommodations, you know, for all the residents of the city and all parts of the city, you know, and as well as in the background, what you don't see for a document like this is how we're implementing those specific details, which is what I covered a few minutes ago and, and, uh, working to bring those throughout, throughout all of the community, but specifically the northern part of the community.
Okay, Dave, let me, uh, would 149 be considered arterial road?
It would be. I'll, I'll let Chris correct me if, if, if I'm wrong, but in the thoroughfare plan or in the county's thoroughfare plan, right? You know, 149 would certainly be considered an arterial in my view.
Okay. So, and that on page 60, that third to the last paragraph, that already loaded. You say shared lanes and sidewalk cannot be part of arterial road. So we, we all even have to run that one then, how about TechStop?
Well, so just kind of, we're still working on it, but yesterday morning, Tuesday, yesterday morning, we had a call with TechStop. Kind of get an update on all the projects in and around the city. That was one thing that they're going to look into further is how they could fit more of a shared use lane along 149. That spacing wouldn't allow sidewalks by themselves, especially when you got to like the bridges at Down Creek, et cetera. Uh, but they're going to look into some alternatives and get back to us. So it's completely off the table, but it's, you know, they're kind of still working through it.
I mean, they could do something like a, a bike path, uh, part of the pavement area, but, but that's not to say people couldn't walk on it also.
Correct. And that's kind of what they're looking at is I believe the propose, what they had proposed in the improvements project was adding between three foot and five foot shoulders on each side. So taking that and convert, maybe offsetting it to give more of a shared use space on the one side of the street. They're going to take a look and, and get back to us as of yesterday morning. So.
Did you find out about their plan from ages ago that included, um, a path or a trail or whatever they were calling it at the time?
So they, what they, what they were telling us today, so their current plan, which is, which is really on hold, one of my notes.
Right. But I'm, I'm talking about the one from way, way, way long ago. So they had something that had a separate, uh, pedestrian situation. We'll call it.
We did not. So that was one of the things that they're going to look into, but what they said is kind of where they left it was from, I think Clepper or Berkeley to 105 was the only sidewalks left north of that. And it was not because of spacing. And so one of the questions that we asked was exactly what Randy and everyone asked here is could we do more of a shared use or bike lane or something that could have that spacing that they were going to look at?
But if they had, but if they had 60 to 80 feet of right of way, then clearly space is not an issue.
Right. It, it did again, just depends on what, you know, again, text outs requirements and what they are allowed to put in versus, you know, true space. But again, more clarification problem.
Right. I'd just like, again, I'd like to see it have a, have what their previous drawings or their previous plans were so that, you know, again, when we come with our full on plan for downtown and, um, you know, it should have a vision for connecting our whole city to our new downtown. That includes plans that they themselves drew up, even if it had, we have to erase 19 and put 20 on it.
Right. Right. Yeah, we're still digging.
So Chris, in that, in that deal to, to what, are they planning, wanted to be widened 149?
No, it was more of an overlay. Uh, so redoing the road and adding the shoulders. So it wasn't necessarily a full widening of 149. There were some, you know, the turn lanes at, well, specifically with the turn lane at 105 and, uh, 149 northbound. We talked about, but that was really it on 149. There's, there's a whole lot more coming along 105 and a couple of things at 2854. But on 149, there wasn't much widening in that scope, uh, due to space limitations.
Can I step in here a minute?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, last year when we were talking about 149, uh, part of, part of the issue was there. No one could tell that that was a curve. We had those curve signs put in. Talking with TechStocks at that time, they were supposed to widen those shoulders. It came down to the end of the year and it came to a budget thing with them. They didn't have the money for it. They were supposed to come back this year and start to widen those shoulders, which will help both, uh, walking traffic and road traffic. But, uh, that was, uh, matter of fact, I talked with Mr. Gillum about a month ago about the same thing, about putting the stop signs in and also widening those shoulders. Because last year was a budget issue with it. But that was supposed to be one of the projects that we're already going to be doing.
Interesting. I think I'd like to say too, um, just when it, Becky, did you think like 500 years ago, didn't they, TechStop had plans to include bike paths going all the way up to the forest, didn't they, for 149?
Hmm, I don't think all the way up into the forest. It would have ended at 1097. Yeah. Um, and it was, it would have been more than five or six years ago. They had disappeared by the time I got on council. But there was still a memory of them recently having been on, on the dock.
I got you. Well, I'm just going to say this for everyone, as far as I'm concerned anyway. I definitely feel like even if the comprehensive plan, I, I can see where you can tie different pieces to, to the things that we talked about before. I definitely feel like between last council meeting and this council meeting, there's, there's plenty of record of what we want the comprehensive plan to, to include. You know, so I don't know if rewriting the whole comprehensive plan is, is needed, obviously, but I definitely think that we have a record of what we all want to see happen in the future. I don't think there's a doubt that, I don't think there's anyone that doesn't want these great things to happen.
I think, aren't they? I mean, because the comprehensive plan is not to get so granular. It's just, and then we take the projects as like we talked about having a priority of three to five. Okay. Now let's get granular on those projects. What's going to go first and what do those entail?
Yeah. Yeah. And Councilman Lacy, I think your comments are good there because, yeah, what you say there is, you know, exactly how we see it from staff, you know? We, you know, from that, from that discussion, that's where we take some of our direction and how we're planning. You know, and we, we've gone through the budget process several months ago and that outlines a lot of broad priorities, but leaves a lot of room for staff to have some discretion and council to have some discretion. Figure out the individual items later. Yeah. And, you know, and that's how it carries through from a discussion like that towards then what I said a little bit ago of, you know, how we're planning to implement some of those things throughout the next, you know, say six or seven months. And, uh, yeah, and, and certainly some of that discussion was broader and that discussion was not lost on us between, uh, some of the additional work we're going to have to do with TechStop in terms of whether it's, uh, whether it is, you know, you know, pathways that are on the side of the road or wider shoulders. But how do we address the safety of those, uh, you know, that are either walking or cycling, you know, you know, from the north part of town to downtown and back? And, uh, yeah, that's going to be a dynamic discussion that we have to have with them. It's not something that we have, uh, you know, have all the cards in our favor, you know, but it's definitely something, uh, that we're participating in and will continue to do.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, obviously I'm the lamest of lame ducks here, but I think also it might be a good idea to just kind of put on the calendar, you know, to get on a cycle of, you know, refreshing one section of this every year so that it doesn't all pile up to try and do it all at once. You know, it'll certainly be easier to look at this, you know, in January of next year, you know, just the transportation sector, the following year, the housing sector, the following year, a different one. Um, you know, in bite sized chunks. This is really just a skeleton and it's all filled in, even, you know, even though we could still, um, feel that, you know, maybe it doesn't completely represent us without the 2020 census data, but, you know, they put a lot of work into getting it much closer to after our, you know, all of our discussions and, you know, Richard and Mike and Dave implementing a lot of the stuff that everyone spoke about last time. And it'll just be a lot easier to keep it a, a relevant document if we take it and, if you take it in bite sized chunks every year, little pieces of it. And it keeps the discussion alive of what the city really is. So we don't get, excuse me, a, um, a, a point where, you know, you feel like, um, the issues come up all at once and there's a big disconnect, um, between any parts of the city.
You know, I don't think that's.
The discussion more regularly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think that's the way a lot of cities look at their plan in terms, but I, I like your suggestion there. Because if we're looking at a different section every year that maintains, uh, keeping the overall comprehensive plan, you know, in the front of our minds and as a, as a continuing priority, even if we're not reviewing that particular section that year. I'm sure people are going back to look at it, stay fresh on it. And, uh, and I'm going to try to make note of that so we can look at, you know, coming back, you know, on an annual basis and, you know, rotate those sections around. So it's not a huge cumbersome task, but at the same time, it has us with a little more regularity, making sure we're keeping this, uh, keeping this current and keeping it something that we're paying attention to. keeping this current and keeping it something that we're paying attention to.
Right, otherwise you run the risk of having put all this work into it, it becomes something that nobody ever thinks of again beyond a year.
I think that's what happens a lot of places.
Yeah, and we had that happen, the other one, that two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine, and never, nothing ever came of it, so. And this has been two and a half years in the making, so this is good. We'll keep it relevant.
Yeah.
Two, two and a half years of making it, we should at least make it last, you know, have it be relevant for as long as possible.
Well, as I recall, when I was hired, this was one of those kind of extended projects that got put on my plate to try to bring to a, a point of approval and so, and, and, and so I hope I've done that for you here tonight. But we also know it's something that we're going to come back to time and time again. Not just for updates, but for, you know, for an annual review here, and I'll go ahead and commit to doing my part for that.
Same here for myself. Chris, thank you for having that meeting yesterday with Tech Dot. And, you know, Patrick as well too. I'll make sure that, obviously the plan can continue to get reviewed, but the specific things that we want to get on quicker, obviously like the working with Tech Dot on getting those bike lanes or wherever is going to happen. You know, we'll stay on that, obviously now. Well, shame on us if we don't follow up and make the things happen that we know are, are scheduled to do in one. So it's not necessarily about the document as much as it is about us talking and acting right, so. And the thing else, the objections, I, I'm happy with the way things are seeing now and I really appreciate the work you guys put in that document. It does look great, especially for Randy to start off by saying I like it. That's huge. So, yeah.
Was that motion, Kevin?
Oh, okay, can be, sorry, sure. Hey, can be, he's going to come through. All right, I can go back down to the, that page, so I can read it correctly here.
Just say, City of Montgomery draft comprehensive plan.
Okay, I'm making motion to approve the Montgomery Texas draft of the comprehensive plan. How's that?
There you go.
I'll second it.
Move just a second that we approved the draft of the City of Montgomery draft comprehensive plan. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the, and approving. Go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say that, you know, I was always saying, he who started out behind will always remain behind or run faster than the man in front. So we got to really work on it and, and make it come to fruition. Thanks.
Yep.
All right, all those approve of the, approving the City of Montgomery draft of the comprehensive plan, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will approve the City of Montgomery draft of the comprehensive plan. Item number eight on your agenda. Sorry, was there someone that wanted to speak? Discuss and consider authorizing M E D C. Susan, did you get, TJ, I believe I heard him.
I think he said aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
TJ, oops, hold on. He's trying to talk.
TJ, nod your head yes. If you don't approve, nod your head no.
He said yes.
I think he's saying no.
His head's going no.
No, can you hear me?
You can hear me.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll be the longest, no.
Okay.
So that's a one nay vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The, the motion has been made and we will approve the City of Montgomery draft of the comprehensive plan. Okay. And that is order one?
That is correct.
All right, item number eight, does this consider authorizing M E D C expenditure of budgeted funds to contract for services for the downtown design and streetscape improvement project?
Okay, the M E D C has been working towards developing a downtown design plan for several years. Recently, the M E D C issued a request for qualifications for the project and the review committee selected Gunda Corporation as the design firm from the submitted proposals. The city council must approve the work since the contract exceeds $10,000. You know, the city has approval of all work or all item expenses from the M E D C in excess of $10,000. The M E D C budget had a total of $112,000 budgeted for downtown streetscape improvements, which was in the budget that city council approved back in September. The design contract, while it was not finalized by the time the package sent out, we did very late Friday evening get the final, and the final total comes to $108,150.50, you know, which is within the budget amount. Since the copy did not get sent out, let me give you some additional information. It includes four phases of work consisting of background and development, design master plan concepts, draft design master plan, and then phase fours, the design master plan. Those spaces of work are, you know, each contain multiple tasks and it's scheduled to completion from, from start up to 210 days. Just as a matter of verifying that this cost is a good cost, I, I did consult with, with an engineer that I know both personally and professionally, who, who I asked for some assistance in reviewing this. They did not have any financial interest that, you know, they did not, their firm did not even submit on a project like this. And they, they did advise me in their opinion that, you know, that this price was within reasonable expectations. And so, and so with that, the M E D C did vote to move forward with this contract. And so we're just seeking city councils' concurrence to go along with that. You know, and, you know, keeping in mind that at $108,150.50, it is within the budget that council has already approved. So I would like to get the city council approval so we can move forward with that.
Did you discuss the needs about this or are we, okay?
Like, like Richard said, it was within the budget that the M E D C line item that the M E D C set and both boards approved in September.
It's just a courtesy, correct?
Really, right, really this is just coming back as formality because the dollar amount exceeds $10,000. Council, council's already authorized up to $112,000 within the M E D C budget. And so we're, we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's by bringing it back to city council for, you know, for an approval of the specific item and letting council know that this is how the M E D C is expending the funds that were approved for that budgeted item.
So I'd like to make a motion then to approve the proposed project and contract as it is presented.
Second.
Move just a second that we approve the contract and project as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of approving the contract and project as presented, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept and approve the contract and project as presented. Next item on your agenda is the executive session. There is nothing on your agenda this evening to go into executive session, so we'll move right along to council inquiry. I believe Richard Tramm has something that he'd like to discuss.
Yeah, I do want to mention that on the next Tuesday, on the seventeenth, at 6:00 PM, we have the canvassing meeting for the election. We're currently attempting to be able to make sure we can operate that as a, as a hybrid meeting where council can attend remotely, but we can have the candidates sworn in here or those who are elected sworn in here live. And so we will, before the end of this week, we'll relay that information confirming that we'll be able to do that.
Do you want, do you want existing council present as this happens? Yes, Susan, you need us there? Okay.
Susan would like that, so.
I, I really would, yes.
Okay.
And, and just as a note too, Judge Mack is going to be here to. Yes, of office.
And then the other thing I wanted to add is since we have, you know, two terms that are ending here, you know, Councilwoman Huss, you know, Councilman Burley, one of you has served here much longer than I've been with the city. The other came on council, you know, you know, you know, after me, you know, just want to relate to both of you. It's been a pleasure to be able to work with you in this time. And I, I also know that I'm going to be running into both of you in the community as time continues, so I look forward to that with each of you.
I think city's been working with Randy as long as Randy's been here, so, and I will continue to do so as well as Ms. Huss.
I'll go back to hiding.
Whoa, you can hide, Randy. Thanks for all your service, guys. Not everybody wants to step up because of sometimes the scrutiny and name-calling and all the things that you get, so I appreciate you, Randy stepped up and Rebecca staying on as long as you did. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Service is in the family.
And I have a turcan's heart.
Hey, Richard. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, can we take down the orange fence you have in front of the community center?
We, I just got, we just got the final word on the insurance items. I think it was two days, well, Friday, I was informed of that, and today I got the first quote on moving the wall, which was, you know, which I'm going to have to get some additional quotes on that, but we are trying to move that forward now.
So in the meantime, can we clean up the broken rocks and?
We're, we're, we're going to, we're going to start picking those up, you know, this week here now. That, the insurance part of that is settled and we're going to preserve the material as best we can so we can reuse it when the, you know, as the wall is put back together and hopefully we're able to move that inward for greater security of the wall as well.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Richard, I had an item, and TJ was right about sidewalks, you know, do a lot of walking around the city. And as far as Buffalo Springs, you know, our HOA kind of hovers over our sidewalks inside our community. When you get out, like around Memory Park, there's homes there. I don't think they have HOA and their sidewalks in disarray or cracked up, crumbling up. How do, how does the city handle that? I don't think it's city property, the sidewalk is. I think it's the homeowner. Does the city communicate that to the homeowner that they need to fix the sidewalk in front of their residents? Or how do we go about that? And the one I'm talking about is right across from Memory Park on the, North Park and a lot of Memory Park is on the west side of the road. But there's probably other areas in town the same way that have sidewalks that are not being maintained.
Well, areas where, areas where there are city sidewalks, obviously those are items then that the city would maintain. It's, I'm going to, I'll drive out in those areas and have public works look at them. I'm not, you know, I'm not entirely sure of the answer to your question because if they're not city's property, I don't think it's something that obviously, you know, you, that your, that council is expecting more, more desiring me to, you know, expend funds on when it's not our property. But, but in terms of mobility, you know, it certainly is something I'd like to take a look at and, you know, we probably do need to figure out a way that it can be addressed.
Yeah, I don't think it's the city property. It was there before the home, but I guess what I'm getting at is I don't want the city to go spend their funds on it, but do we have any grounds to maybe ask, request the homeowner to maintain those sidewalks? I know, like I said, Buffalo Springs, we had that in our, in our D restrictions that we have to do that. But once you get out of certain developments, it's kind of a gray area.
Yeah, certainly, we can bring it to their attention and request that they do. You know, it's like, a question I might ask here is for both our engineer and attorney around this call. What the, you know, have they seen a similar situation with any of their other clients and what may have been done there?
I think just with this one, we need to look at the specifics of where, because there are so many of these streets that are private streets. And I know, I don't think Bessie Owens itself is, but the areas around it, if it's only on Bessie Owens, we'll take a look and see if it's a public street and it's a public right of way, I think it's a public sidewalk to take care of, because as we're accepting streets on public, the sidewalks included is part of it. But there's some of those other areas, like you mentioned, it's homeowner and/or HOA responsibility, so.
Yeah.
As soon as that list, well, we can help staff take a look and get something else.
And I do have some cities that have specific ordinances related to maintaining sidewalks. I haven't checked Montgomery's with respect to that, but.
We don't.
We do, sounds like. But I think it's on Bessie Price Owens that you're talking about and that's the non-HOA part. It's a strange part of that where it's non-HOA.
Yeah, this kind of falls back, yeah, because when I went through the, the comprehensive plan, you know, we talked a lot about sidewalks and, and mobility around the city as we all discussed quite a bit this afternoon. But then when we go put sidewalks in and don't, you know, have no means of requiring people to maintain them or keep it maintained, we, it's going to be a losing battle eventually, you know what I'm saying? Unless, unless we do our homework upfront, and like I said, our Buffalo Springs D restrictions do require the homeowner to do it. But then you have areas of the city that the sidewalk can just totally crumble and it's a big gray area.
That's our responsibility to maintain in this case.
I appreciate staff looking at that then. Thank you.
Well, we'll get, we'll get those looked at and then if it's something that falls to us to maintain, then we will, we will find a way to get it done.
Alan, do you have any of your cities that have creative ordinances that would address this? I'm sure.
Well, we, we have some that place the burden on the homeowner. You know, those always tend to be, you know, problematic.
We had that in our neighborhood. It is. It's a hot topic for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and some cities take it upon themselves and, and say, to heck with it, it's too much trouble to try to get the residents to do it. We, they built it into their budget to have so much money for sidewalk maintenance each year.
Hey, Chris, you have any idea when they're going to come back and finish the bridge work down at Town Creek?
Bridge, Rock and Town Creek, are you talking about Buffalo Springs Drive?
No, 149, 149 and.
No, I do not. I have not heard back from them. I, I forgot to ask them on that one this morning. I know they were waiting on materials to bring in that rock to fill in, but I don't have a, I did, I can, I'll follow back up with them, but they didn't give me a ton of.
Is there anything else in, in council inquiry this evening?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move just a second that we adjourned. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We will officially adjourn this meeting at 7:49 PM. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks for putting up all my questions.
We love it, Randy.
Bye.
Bye.